Dr. Reese, would you please lead some prayer?
Let us bow our head, please. Well, we come to you today asking for your guidance, your wisdom, your support in this meeting. Fill us with your grace as we make decisions on behalf of this college, the staffs, the faculty, and all the friends that are involved. Well, continue to give us the wisdom that we need in order to make the decisions that's going to affect all the important people that is concerned about the college. In your name, we pray. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Thank you. All right. Today, is there anyone that would consider public comments? Is there anyone that would like to speak? Thank you. Dr. Morrison, the president's report, please.
Yes, sir. We're going to hold off on the summer and fall run until the next board meeting. We will have our final summer numbers. So we'll be able to kind of go through all those and we'll also kind of give you a some a fall forecast in the July meeting. Kind of some things I want to talk about, some things that are going on. First, I want to give, we want to talk about two of our students that represented us at the college national finals in Passerong, Wyoming. Jase Pettencourt and Katie Poco. They were team ropers and they finished 12 at the college finals. So we're proud of how they represented TBCC and their accomplishment. Another thing I want to talk about is we've had a very busy summer with camps on campus. And this is an excellent way to start recruiting your next generation of Cardinals. We had 70 participants in the football camp and have 81 at volleyball, 20 in the esports. We're anticipating 200 for the cheer camp. Softball had 20, the Cardets had 110. Soccer is planning a chant as we speak. Men's basketball is anticipating about 20 and women are at 10 with people still signing up. So it's good to kind of see that activity on our campus during the summer, kind of introducing the young people to TBCC. Another thing that so everybody knows on July 6th and July 22nd, we'll have our Black School orientation. So our incoming freshmen will be on campus. I hear the numbers are up according to Student Services, so that's good to hear. And so that's going well. Another thing I want to kind of bring to people's attention is we have launched our weekly kind of talk show to kind of tell what's going on at TBCC every Thursday at noon. Still does not have a name, but our first week, first show, we had 1,400 views. And the second one, we had 1,600 views. And the first show, we talked about the rodeo program and the college finals. The second one, we talked about enrollment with the director of enrollment. And this Thursday, we'll be talking about the welding program and we'll have a current student and alumni as well. So a lot of activity on the campus this summer, a lot of construction projects from the Boilers in Northwest Hall, Boilers and Cardinal Hall, Sprinkler Systems in Northwest Hall, to Boilers in South and West Hall, to new lighting downstairs. I don't know if you noticed when you walked up the stairs, you can actually see new lighting downstairs. The construction projects for the LPM program, vocational nursing program in Palestine is on target. It's getting close to deadline, but it's on target. The construction project for the Tarrell Campus for Plumbing and Electrical are ahead of schedule. They're still working and doing all the prep work for the TDCJ building in Palestine. And that's actually ahead of schedule. So that's looking well also. So during this time of year, we spend a lot of times repairing HVAC units and painting, striking parking lots. All that stuff gets the campus ready for the fall enrollment. So a lot of activity in the physical plant. Tony, your staff are doing an amazing job in some incredible heat to ensure our campus is going to look nice for the students for this fall. Nothing I kind of remind you everyone of, your 2223 annual board assessment is in front of me. Do you please kind of work on that and complete that and turn that into Norma or Janine? We greatly appreciate it. I want to remind everybody, September 14th and 16th, the annual CAT conference will be in Fort Worth. Trustee Henry and I visited the CAT conference last Thursday or traveled down Thursday, Friday in McAllen, Texas. It was very informative. We were on the campus of South Texas College. A lot of good information. Not necessarily detailed information about house build eight, but solely more information about the house builds coming out as we prepare to implement that fully this fall. But it is an excellent opportunity to meet some of your colleagues across the state that represent community colleges and two-year colleges. So I encourage you to think about, we do have a registration deadline this Friday. We want to get the early bird prices. So if you're interested in it, just reach out to Norma as well and let us know if you would like to attend that conference. That's 14th and 16th. And later, we'll be talking about a conference in Las Vegas, October 9th to 12th. That's the ACC conference.
Yes, we will need to know who wants to go because we'll need to make those registrations to get some.
Okay. So if you're wanting to attend the ACCT conference in Las Vegas, please let us know so we can start making reservations for that conference. It's a good opportunity to kind of see where policies are going towards for higher education and two-year colleges. What's on kind of the mind of the federal government? I feel like accreditation is going to be a hot topic across the country and changes with accreditation and so forth. So please think about that and give us some consideration with attending. We'd love to kind of get as many people as we can to attend that conference. So let's see here. Now I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Emily. She's going to kind of give us an update on some foundation board activities. And the work her staff is doing, our foundation is doing a great job in making sure we get information out of the student. And they just met to award scholarships. She's going to talk more about that.
Yeah, let me use this one.
Go ahead, Emily.
Everybody here? Do my best, too. Well, thank you so much for allowing me to present to you tonight. And I want to start off before I get into the details of the handout that's going around. I want to thank you for your support of TBCC Foundation and in particular, your support of the Dr. Jerry King Endow Scholarship. There were many on this board that contributed to make that a reality and help Jerry's legacy to live on here in college. So it's much appreciated. So thank you so much again. Regarding the latest news from the foundation, our board met last week on June 21st. And our chairman of many years, Mr. Steve Grant, stepped down out of that role to be able to lead this board. And so we welcomed our new chairman, Mr. Mike Henry, to that role. So welcome, Mike, and we're glad to have him on board as well. You know, this is the big time of the year for scholarships. This is obviously our main scholarship deadline of the year, June 1st every year. And time that we meet as a scholarship committee to hand out scholarships for the incoming school year. We did have that meeting on June 7th to make those awards. And as you can see in your report, the committee awarded 186 scholarships worth $355,500. Compared to last year, we had a little bit fewer applicants this year, but we were able to give a little bit more to a lot of those applicants that did apply. So that was a good thing. I think it's going to have a real impact on those students' lives. And so we're excited about that. The average scholarship award, which normally runs anywhere from about $750 or $1,000 up to $2,000. This year was up a little bit closer to $1,900 for your, your average applicant. So that was a good thing. We're also doing again this year a round of spring only scholarships for those who missed our June 1st deadline. And that application period is going to open October 2nd. And we usually leave the application up in 30 days for students to apply for spring 2024 scholarships. Last year was our first year to do this. We gave out about $50,000 worth of scholarships again. So we expect to do about the same this year. The other project we've had going on, I'm moving down the list here. We've put about $8,000 or $9,000 of our capital funding into cleaning up outside of the Cardinal Fitness Center. If you've driven by that building, of course, you know, it was the old armory. So it's been around for a long, long time. And we had the building pressure washed and painted. The trim was painted. We also had the window casing scraped and painted and cleaned up, and it looks 100% better. I mean, it's really amazing. We pulled several, well, I say we, Tony, I think, pulled several dead plants from the flower beds over there. And it makes a world of difference to just have everything cleaned up and put a new coat of paint on those downspouts and the trim. Some of our key donations that have come in recently, the Ginger Marks and Foundation generously awarded another three-year, $1.2 million grant for dual credit funding. And so that was exciting. Dual credit continues to receive that support from them. As you know, we wrapped up a three-year grant last year of another one place you made. So they've really given a lot to dual credit these last three or four years. The other exciting news was from the Ray H. Mar Foundation. They've agreed to give 125,000 this year in workforce scholarship funding on top of the 80,000 they gave last year from the same scholarship. So we really have a good start for those workforce students coming in to our line worker and electrical and plumbing programs. So we're excited about that. Our newest endowed scholarships, of course, I mentioned the Dr. Jerry King Scholarship. And we also have the Matt Peake Endow Scholarship, which has been completed and we expect to award that next year. And then our other newest scholarship is the Randy Reeves Memorial Scholarship. Randy was an alum here. I don't know if any of y'all knew him and his brother or no, Gary over in Malcom, the owners of Malcom Nursery. Gary established that scholarship in memory of Randy, who was killed in a car accident in 2021. So that concludes my report. I'd be glad to take any questions that you might have about the foundation or anything that we're working on. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
That's a little red button, I think.
At this time, we will address item number four, consider minutes of April 24th, 2023 board meeting and the May 23rd, 2023 special board meetings. In your packet, copies of those minutes were provided. Then we hear a motion to approve. Correct? The first motion to approve. First thing you say, Rebecca, Dr. Eaton, all in favor? Mr. Hopkins, would you give us the consider the business and financial investment report, please?
Yes, sir. As Ron brings it up. I did want to point out a few things in revenue this month. We looked at April files and the life preliminary. Your tuition fees, it's pretty much been the case most of the year is pretty well evened last year. The, again, housing, food service, bookstore, all doing better. Part of that is rate increases. Some of it, like bookstores, increased sales. I direct you down to the gifts. We did get the money from the Tarrell EDC for the electrical and plumbing programs. Some of that money, if it's not used this year, it will defer it on the balance sheet and that'll come back next year if they use whatever they don't use. I'll talk more about investment income. We get the the investment policy. We are in the process. Stephanie and I are moving. We've set up CDs and moved money to the money markets that we discussed in the prior meetings to get rates well over 4%. Under other sources, this is the last of the HERF money, the Million 149, 915. We drew that down. Program ends June 30th. So that'll, that'll be the end of the HERF money. We wanted to, I drew that down a little early. I didn't want to anticipate any problems. So that's why you see that big increase there in that month. Nothing really new. payroll we're running would be salary increases in the part two of the salary stay. We're actually running a little under what would be expected with rare various retirements and so forth. EMO, nothing really there new to point out. I will say that between, again, you've heard me harp on this, between repair and maintenance and major repairs, again, you're going to see those look a little bit as we only try to charge the $100,000 projects to major repairs for the coordinating board. Next page would be your cash. And we can go probably page two, Ron. We still got 2897. Ucap reserve, 5.6 operating reserve. Down one more.
Thanks, Mike.
Yeah. You see your investment report and again, we're, a lot of those CDs are coming, we're changing them by day. And we've moved those into much higher rates. And it's amazing how hard that is when you change board presidents and college presidents and they want signatures. And they didn't understand why the musical chairs. So it took us a little while. Next page. And again, this is your Ucap reserve report. Well over 29 million. I've got two months of the over 25,000. Let's go. I'll pause at each one if I have any questions. First one's March. And the last one, there is April. May have anything about this question? Thoughts, Steve? That's, that's all I've got. Pretty good.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for you? David?
I'm sorry, Steve. What is the return of funds to the coordinating board? $133,000.
This is the reskilling grant, the one that we have received that was based on, it was a very short, not short, but it was very tight list of criteria that students had to meet in order to be eligible. The programs that were included in it were things like accounting, management, welding was part of it. Some of the nursing programs were included in it. We did utilize $466,000 of the grant and returned 133. But we, we had a hard time finding students because it couldn't go to a brand new student. It had to be a student who was coming back in, had already a certain number of hours and could be basically learning a new skill to go back out into the industry.
Any other questions? Your motion to approve the financial report? Motion made. Seconded, all in favor? All right. Next item of business would be to consider and discuss dates for the final fiscal year 2324 budget workshop, tax rate hearings, and adoption of fiscal year 2324 budget approval in September board meeting. Dr. Morrison?
David's going to talk that.
I got you. This is just the meeting, as y'all recall, the appraisal district certified to plus July 5th. Then I'll spend a couple of weeks trying to calculate the over popular rollback tax rate or no new revenue rate, as they call it, and the voter approval rates. Then typically we will meet around August 9th and this is for y'all's approval. But we have to, once we adopt or y'all propose to vote on a future tax rate, then I've got to publish in paper. We have to have a public hearing. And as y'all recall, the state law, and I will remind you that legislature's killing session. So we don't, we hope that these rules don't change, but we can hold a public hearing, vote on the tax rate, approve the budget, all in the same night, August 28th, at the August board. And again, this is the same schedule we had last year. Adjusted the dates for this year's board meeting. I don't think they're going to change all that. As y'all well know, they're still talking about things like tax rates and homesteads, but I don't think they've changed the truth to taxation law itself.
Anybody have any questions or comments? We need to vote on this.
Yes.
I hear a motion to approve the 2023, 2024 tax rate and budget schedule. Trustee Henry, maybe he can second it. All in favor? All right. Consider and discuss budget adjustments from contingency.
Board, I have just two small ones this time. The first one is the last of the Blue Icon contract, as y'all recall. That is the firm that helped us with the deal we on it. To finish that contract, which totaled actually 28,506. I pulled another 13,505 out of contingencies, y'all recalled, and board had approved 15,000 previously. You see that as market proof. And again, this year, we didn't raise the fuel budget as much as we should have. When we did the budget this year, I need another 25,000 to get us through August in the fuel budget.
Any discussion?
David on the fuel, I know it's a lot last year, it's paying more travel. And given that fuel prices have gone down rather significantly, is this just because of more travel? Sorry, you're going to adjust substantially. And yet, and then starting here, the fuel prices dropped a lot.
Right.
So just come back to more travel.
Well, a couple of things. One is especially in playoff season, we have a lot of people traveling. But what I, and I made some notes on here, last year, we increased the budget from 53 to 72. This year, will we finish the year at 82? So the second piece of that is we didn't raise the budget. So we didn't even raise it to where we finished the year. Of course, we have to do it before you finish the year. And we're already at 86,000 this year, which is not too much different than last year. And so it's really those two factors. We did travel a little more during playoffs. But basically, we just lowballed the budget that was lower than what we got. Yeah, thanks.
Here a motion to approve the contingency fund budget adjustments.
Motion.
Trustee Sloan led first motion and seconded by Mike Jerry. All in favor?
Aye.
Consider and discuss student athletic insurance.
For now.
Thank you. As you can see, the information in front of you, prices have gone up again for a couple of reasons. One, of course, is inflation. We did have that issue coming out of last year. But the more significant issue is we had a significant rise in the number of paid claims out injured students, injured athletes in the past year. If you remember, we talked about this at length last year because we had gone up quite a bit as well. And last year, four years prior, we had a significant number of injuries and several, several major surgeries and things that had kept the rates high of what we've done had last year happened, was basically the same thing. So our last, our last season of athletics, we had those same high numbers of injuries and those high numbers of surgeries. So what that has done is it's provided to make the amount we need to pay this year considerably higher, roughly $79,000 higher than it was the year before. And we've looked at multiple options and this was one of the cheaper methods we found, one of the cheaper options we did. Now, there are other, we talked about other options, both in this group and in other groups, you know, there's the self-insure option, but you take a big risk with that. And all of those would lower our premiums, but they put us at greater risk than other places. And so far, it's been deemed that we'd be better off paying premiums than going with one of the other options.
How do we make that loss experience better? You know, many times it's great, no matter what you're doing on the ground, you're going to lose. I'm saying, a lot of the manage, you know, there are accidents, you're not mine, I get it. But if you have those with good histories, you have those with consistent bad histories. And invariably, you find the one manages against losses, the other just doesn't matter.
We managed, we managed to get losses already with our athletic training program. And so many of the things that come up where athletes are hurt, they see our own athletic trainers. And so we are saving money already with that avenue. But when the injuries become more serious and we can't do that, that's where we have to see the outside medical attention. What, as, as you all know, as you just said, those injuries interact, you can't expect them, they simply happen. And some people are worse prone to injuries than others. And all of our coaches are working feverishly to lower this rate because they know I'm not happy with it. But things like better warmups before, before they start exercising, making sure that we're warming up properly and those kinds of things. Making sure that we're not having any of the students out there without the right equipment. And they're, they're, they're doing those things. And so we're, I think we're really making it much of an effort right now.
Do you see that as an escalating effort? Or is it just, well, we've always been doing everything good and we're just still doing the same thing, still having greater losses? Or do you think, pardon, do you think your advantage versus those exposures is, is, is further?
I think the management of those exposures started moving last year. When we, when we saw that, that large increase last year from what we had at work, we started really looking at what we could do to mitigate those, those injuries. I think we had a, every, every so often, you have an unlucky year. And those, and those injuries, you know, if you have, you have a year where it's football injury, then, but no one else, then you're, you got a pretty good year. What we've had this year, this past year, was a number of different sports that had those kinds of injuries happen. And some of them actually were quite serious. And so they raised the cost. We try every day to limit those. And we just, sometimes it is what it is.
Do we have any contracts, specific providers?
Sure. Baywatch, God and White is one of the people that we use. They've helped us. They've actually helped us to find an athletic trainer, which again, is lower some of the costs.
So.
So we do, we do go to those regular providers that we, we have here locally. And when we have to go, go far afield, then we use those, Baywatch, God and White for the most part. Now, we also have something new that we developed last year with Dr. Curran's doctor, his medical practice here in town. He applied for a grant and we were able to get the grant that allowed us to go and see his, his medical staff basically for free. And so we are trying to use that as much as we can too. But again, that's more juvenile, it's more juvenile kind of thing, but if it's an athlete, it still counts against us depending on what it is.
Any other questions? You'll hear a motion to approve student athletic accident insurance coverage for 2023, 24. Dr. Easton made a motion?
Second.
Yes, made second. All in favor?
Aye.
Who knows? Consider and discuss faculty contract renewals. Dr. Morrison?
I just asking board approval to approve the 2324 faculty contracts.
We've had a chance to review this. Do I hear a motion to approve? Trustee Stone seconded. Trustee Stone, seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
All opposed? Consider and discuss administrators' contract renewal, administrators' contract renewal.
Same premise, just asking the board for approval for administration contracts.
We hear a motion to approve. Trustee Stone approved my motion. Trustee, every second. All in favor?
All right.
We opposed? Passes. Consider and discuss audit engagement letter. Mr. Hopkins?
As, as we do over here, Kevin Cash has asked me to bring the audit engagement letter for the board. Most y'all talk to them. They do a really good job for us. We do now, the fiscal year is not over, but as y'all might have called, they do a lot of preliminary work in July and August in anticipation of year end. So we just ask that board approve this engagement letter for the twenty-three audit.
You're a second? And then second, all in favor?
I have one question during the discussion.
Yes. I'm Mark. I should have brought. And this is pretty much same as last year. Their basic fee is sixty-five, six fifty.
That's my work getting that. We do pretty much.
Yeah, and they split it down. If we do have to have a state single audit, we always have a federal because of the federal fund. But if we have to have a state single audit, they have to do that, it's another six thousand. But they, since we've hired them, it's always been in that mid-sixties range since I've been.
Thank you.
You have a motion, this, this motion to approve? Oh, we did, we did vote, okay. Discuss, consider, discuss personnel updates.
And before you have a list of resignations, termination, retirements, new hires, reclassification of the glory, just asking board's approval.
We hear a motion to approve. Trustee, they make motion?
One second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Yeah, at this time, an update from the board committee on the District Two Board Member Vacants. Dr. Charlie?
I'll have to play a little guilty here for getting behind on this. I hope this one was maybe reported and some of the turnovers advanced. There had been one application submitted. It felt like we really need one for application to review and interviews. We readdress that and go out another time. I've had interest that I may not respond to the right source to get their information in. So we're going to reopen that process again for applications and kind of get moving forward.
Thank you very much. At this time, we will convene the executive session showing Texas Government Codes five five one dot oh seven four and five five one dot oh seven two, the Texas Open Media Act for the following purposes, personnel, District Two Board Member Vacancy, real property. Trustee Stone made motion. Trustee, every second, all in favor? Okay. Next, next item of business, we're reconvening to take any necessary action regarding personnel, district two board member or real property. Are there any discussion on those matters? Hearing none, here a motion to adjourn. Dr. Easton, second, all in favor?
All right.
Okay, got it.
Thank you.